The invite to the meeting.
Okay, we're live.
Okay, at this point, I would like to call this meeting to order and I will hand it over to you, Mr. Fenter.
Thank you, Mrs. Brogan. Good morning, everybody. Thanks to everybody who are able to join us.
Okay, we're live.
And thanks to everyone who's able to join us on the Zoom as well as for those who are viewing remotely. We are meeting again today to continue our important work of our reopening of school plans for the fall. I'm sure that everybody has heard the governor speak recently about the reopening of schools. He has certainly expressed that schools need to have a plan to reopen for the fall. Our district, our leaders, our task force with input from all parents and and others have been working very diligently to make as many of the plans as possible and think about all of the the consequences, both intended and unintended of the different models for return in the fall. I will remind this group that we had a task force meeting not that long ago, at which time we presented to the board and to the community a variety of ideas for schedules as well as summaries of each of our advisory group sessions. At that last meeting, we had shared a number of possible schedules to be followed, both either at the elementary or the secondary level for the board's consideration and for discussion. Because there was so much information shared at our last meeting, there was limited ability of the board members to ask questions about those schedules. And so we've decided for today's task force meeting that we would have a more more specific focus for today, which would be looking at the schedules. You'll see that some changes and modifications have taken place as a result of the feedback that we received last time. But we also wanted to be sure that the board and others had the opportunity to ask questions about items that that may not have had that opportunity. Secondly, today, we would like to just provide a brief overview of the survey that we plan to send out to our community this week, as noted in a communication from me late last week to our community. So I'll provide a little bit of an overview of that as well. And of course, if there are any questions about that, we can address them as well. So at this time, if it's agreeable, and I see Mr. Palano, good morning. If it's agreeable at this time, I'd like to review the review the the schedules, beginning with the elementary level. This is Mr. Palano now, if that's okay to do at this point. If it's agreeable, I'd like to provide a brief overview of each of the options. And then I thought it might be helpful to ask the 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 board at that point if they have any questions at that time, so we could go through one at a time and really devote the time to look at those items. So I am going to share, I believe. Is that right? I'm going to share the screen. Okay, just may I have a moment just to? My apologies. Okay, is everybody able to see the screen as I'm sharing it?
Yes, Bob.
Yeah, yeah, I can see it.
Yes, it's good.
I appreciate it. Sorry about that delay. So the first choice is looking at a school opening model. I'm looking at the wrong document here. Sorry. Joe, can I? Joe, could I ask you to pull up the document that we were referring to? The app, I'll just ask you to.
Well, Bob, I just sent it to you via email again.
Great. Thanks, Phil. Joe, were you able to share that one?
Yep, let me get to there.
Have it. Sorry, I just, I'm working a Chromebook here that I'm, I just am also just learning here. My apologies. The first choice that, as Mr. Monastero is bringing that up, the first choice that we want to look at is one that reflects 100% of attendance for our students to report to school in September. This model would be one that would mean that our student in our school is not required to have a six-foot physical distance between between students and necessarily staff members. We would follow a traditional master schedule. And what we would do is to ensure that we did took as many actions to have safe practices as possible. We would follow rules such as one-way hallway, walking down the hallway. We would have our students stay in the their classes for the day. Our specials would be utilized and and done in a manner that would be a push-in model. So, for example, when our students had art, the art teacher would actually go to the classroom rather than the students leaving and going to the art room. In addition, lunch would be scheduled in the classrooms. And because we anticipate that if students were able to be closer than six feet, we firmly believe that face coverings would be required under that circumstance. So this model is one where all students would again be returning with 100% daily attendance. And it would be one where students report to their classrooms and receive a full day of instruction as is most typical of our traditional school experience. Does the board have any questions about this model?
I think it makes sense, but I, you know, I clear, I think it's what we'd all like. You know, my sense is, you know, what I'm what I'm starting to hear, you know, across the country is either if you want to keep kids closer to this, our students closer than six feet apart, we need to do it in a cohort model, which I know is the next choice. So I mean, I I think I'd love to get back to choice, choice one. My sense is it's, I think, as we get more guidance, I don't know how realistic that's going to be.
Are there any other questions or comments? I would say, Mr. Feiberg, that this model would also, and we can, we can add this to the document. It would maintain a cohort model, but those cohorts would be larger, as you suggested, full-class cohorts.
Okay, got it.
Separation. However, you know, as we look pivot to the next possibility, we will certainly explore that concept as well.
But Bob, I think number, choice number one, this would only be if, for some reason, which I don't see it happening, that social distancing is no longer required. So I I don't know that it's really realistic.
Right. So that's, that's the, again, you're absolutely right, Mrs. Brogan. It's based on the posit that six-foot distancing would not be required. And so therefore, that's something, especially with the trending happening in our country, would be certainly questionable. Absolutely. All right. Looking to the, looking to the next model, Mr. Monastero, if you could scroll a little bit. Thank you so much. Do appreciate your assistance, Joe, very much. For choice two, this, this option is one where we look at bringing students in again at the elementary level with 100% attendance of our students, looking at small, smaller cohorts. In other words, having our elementary classes divided into two groups. The model here would be one that would make space, basically make use of every space in our buildings. And they would have the same precautions enforced with training regimens, with one-way hallways, with students, you know, being socially distant for face coverings, certainly, more than likely. However, the, we would maintain those same precautions in order to keep students and staff as safe as possible. In this case, one of the things about this model that's important is that because we would be utilizing all of our staff, all of our teaching staff and teacher assistants to supervise additional groups of students, our specials program would be significantly limited. We anticipate that as our specials teachers rotated between the classes, it could mean that students receive art and music and fless and other specials as few times as once or twice a month. And that is something that is obviously a huge sacrifice to make, looking at this model. But it would mean that our students would be supervised throughout that time. This model basically has students, a teacher, reporting to students in two different classrooms for half of the day in person. If you look at it sort of as a morning and afternoon session, the classroom teacher would work with the class for one half of the day in the morning. We could, we certainly consider having a live stream to the other location where the rest of the class is as the students are supervised by another teacher or staff member. The, in order to accomplish this model, it would be required to have a shorter instructional day. In other words, students would have to arrive to school later than typical. And that's largely because the length of the teaching day would be one that would be very difficult to accommodate teacher breaks and preparation periods that would be necessary in in order to deliver this model. In addition to that, we anticipate that there would be additional staffing required in order to support this model. And, Mr. Monastero, if you could just scroll to the the second portion of this choice, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. And as you can see on the screen, there would be a need for staffing for each building. At Goose Hill, we look at the likelihood of four teacher assistants added in order to provide this supervision. West Side, three teacher assistants and half of an aide in order to provide breaks to teaching staff in the afternoons. Lloyd Harbor School, four additional teacher assistants and an additional aide. And this would represent additional costs for our district as well. We also would see, because we were utilizing all existing staff to provide the supervision, including using reading teachers and others in our classes, that our AIS program would also be extremely limited because of the new utilize our staff for supervision. There would also be additional technology costs and possible furniture increases as well. As I mentioned with the additional staffing, we have to consider the viability of this model. We we acknowledge and appreciate the attractiveness of this model and that all students would be in school every day. It would be far from perfect because our students would not be in the same classroom with their classroom teachers each day, every day. But we have to be realistic about the ability of our district to be able to hire and recruit additional staff members for these positions, positions that we would anticipate would not last more than a year and potentially not last the entire year, depending on the circumstances. So that will only make our recruiting that much more challenging for these positions. There is, you know, as I said, the benefit would be our students would be in school for almost the 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 same length of the school day as they would typically have. There is one possibility we can, we can look at in terms of this model, which is looking at the possibility of having, as was mentioned at our last meeting, having our very youngest students at the kindergarten level potentially do a half-day, which would free up some staff, so our first graders could potentially attend school all day, supervised under this model. So we mentioned this as a possible K to six model, but there's also, there would also be the possibility that at Goose Hill, if we chose to adjust the length of the kindergarten day, that it is possible to impose such a model for our first graders and and maintain their their status coming to school each day. So at this time, I'll turn it over to the board to ask any questions they might have in regards to this model. And I will mind, just remind the board that our our principals are here as well as our advisory group leaders to assist in answering any questions that may come up.
Um, Bob, hi. Um, one quick question. I understand definitely the shortcomings of this in terms of hiring and staff, which is significant, also considering that we could have staff members being ill and not coming to school. And and it's already very difficult to get substitute teachers. That's a problem consistently throughout Long Island, not just in our school district for many years. But I have one question. In terms of maybe building upon what you just said about having this model for our youngest learners, did we explore perhaps even extending that not only to like K1, but maybe our second graders? You know, like maybe using part of this model in the elementary schools, maybe not for the upper grades, but only the lower grades? Because the, what I'm hearing from parents, I mean, the hardest students to engage, you know, through the virtual learning are our youngest learners, right? And and the older kids seem to be able to have more stamina doing it. And it's not ideal, obviously, but they have more stamina. So is there maybe a thought of not only looking at this at K1, but maybe K3 or K2? You'd need less hiring. You could probably still preserve your encore program. You know what I'm saying? And maybe AIS, or maybe to think something like that?
Uh, we definitely talked about the possibilities of having different models for our youngest students. And we did, we did explore for K1. Can I ask the rest of the group who's part of the conversations? Is that something that we've explored in this scenario?
I, oh, I, um, thi- this model I'm concerned with, not just because of the staffing issues, which I think that that really makes this model not workable, but also the fact that I heard a lot from parents with regards to, there was the whole issue, especially for the younger learners, with regards to, there was no schedule put into place that made it very difficult for parents initially with the online learning, because they had to figure out their own schedules, their own, you know, how to operate in this environment and stuff. I think that as if we have a model that puts structure in place, I don't think we can get away from not having anything virtual. And by that, I mean, even on this model, if you're bringing in the entire school, or let's just say Goose Hill, and half, and I take it this is for the elementary also, and half are in a different classroom, and they're only getting their teacher half a day. So somebody's going to babysit them the other half, unless they're going to livestream it in, which, to me, I I I don't know, maybe having them come in and sit at school and have it livestreamed in is different from having it at home. But I think, and I, and but I think that, you know, the the shorter instructional day, to me, I, you know, doesn't really accomplish what I really would like to see as far as a model that provided really academics to move all of our students forward. And I'm not thrilled with I, with the AIS staff being limited and and specials once or twice a month. I just, I, 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 I don't see that. I don't think that that's appropriate. I think that we could, you know, I, I think that the hybrid reduced, I know we haven't gotten there, satisfies and provides the kids with just a lot more opportunity.
Thank you, Mrs. Brogan. I, I did, I'm sorry. I I did want to just let, thank you, Ms. Brogan. And those really, those are real consequences to this model, that those areas will certainly be impacted, and those important areas will be impacted. Mrs. Wright, I did want to just make sure I answered your question. We looked at this for K1, certainly. We did discuss possible models applied into the second grade and the transportation implications of that as well. But we will certainly explore that further in the coming days as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
My apologies if I didn't answer your question. But certainly, those, those are, those are factors. Mrs. Selkyn, did you?
Yes. Um, just one second. What I wanted to ask was, I realized that, you know, there are, you know, there are some drawbacks with this model, but just in keeping it with questions rather than evaluating it for me at this point, I just wanted to be sure that I understood that the additional staffing, it is important that they be at least a level of teaching assistant or above. So that's what, when you're looking at this model, that's what you were looking at, correct?
We were looking at the addition of teacher assistants. And and to provide teachers with breaks in the afternoon and provide supervision for short-term periods of time in the afternoons.
And to be in the second half of the class that was not with their teacher, they would be having a teaching assistant, not a teaching aide. So theoretically, it's not just a teach, someone who is watching them. They are someone who is a teacher, has some training. And so they would be doing, while they might possibly be livestreaming or doing other activities, there is someone of a level that has experience with them. So it's not just someone who is supervising, that they don't get out of their desks and leave the room. They have more training than that. I don't mean that in a negative way. I'm saying you're asking for a teaching assistant.
Teaching assistants, and that would help, that would help cover the half of classes that couldn't be covered by using our existing staff, including teachers in the specials area, AIS areas, and and other areas, librarians. This would be an all-hands-on-deck model that would require additional hiring. We would anticipate a teacher assistance to provide that supervision. But we anticipate that those, all of the people working with the students would be teachers or teacher assistants, and we hire teacher assistants with teacher certifications.
Okay, that's what I was asking. I want to be clear. So the other question I have, just, and then we can move on. Again, I'm not evaluating whether I, at this point, how successful I think this would be. But I had some of the other questions that people asked already. And additionally, when we get to AIS, that's one of the things that really would concern me about this model is the reduction. So if we were to ever get here, and we can look at the hybrid model first, if you don't have the answer, I would really want to look at if we ever really thought about doing this model, which is already difficult, I understand, in terms of the number of staff, how many more it would take so that AIS would not be reduced? Because I think, given what everybody's experienced, teachers, faculty, everyone, in terms of dealing with what we had go on this year and opening again, that to have students who need AIS not get AIS in this environment is something I would really, really want to not have happen. So I don't know how many more people we would, what that would mean if we had to go to this model and wanted to not, and wanted to preserve AIS, at least on a level that we felt was significant, how many more people that would involve? I, I'm concerned about specials also. But I think that if we consider it, we need to look at that as kind of, for me, an additional staffing issue, which may throw it over the edge. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Alton.
Um, Bob, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, so would the students receiving support through their IEPs, would they be in the classroom receiving those services? Or are they going to be outside the classroom? Would they be with other students from other classes? Or would it just be they're trying to limit the amount of interaction between students in other classes?
Very good question. You know, as we've discussed this model, we have been, we, we have preserved our special education staff to provide those services to the students. One of the factors in the planning for this model and all models, as we look at cohorts, is to strategically place students in classrooms where services can be provided in a way that does not require students to be pulled from classes more than necessary. So our scheduling and and assigning of classes may very often reflect the services that students are going to be receiving. I'm not sure if I answered your question, though.
No, you did. Thank you.
I'm looking at the the document here on the screen, so I wasn't able to see if you, your response. I would say that that's one of the the challenges here. And I, I just feel, believe I have to say that, as Mrs. Wright shared with us, this would be an all-hands-on-deck model. Students would be divided into very relatively small groups throughout our schools. There are certainly logistical challenges. Our principals are not intimidated or afraid to tackle logistical challenges. I can promise you that. But I do have concerns of what happens when staff invariably need to call in sick. I think that that will be a reality for us. Sometimes the reality of those illnesses could be as much as multiple weeks for quarantine, for other issues. We have to, I believe, we have to keep that in mind as we look at this model, because we will be stretched. And I think we have to be very sensitive to the the realities that the fall could bring a a very different set of circumstances than New York is currently in. May I go to the next model? Okay. Joe, may I ask you to scroll? So the next model is one that we now move into the hybrid or reduced occupancy models. This one is referring to more of an A-Day, B-Day model. And as you would imagine, on, on, on A-Day, half of the class would report in person to school, and Group B learns from home. And that is the, this way, if we follow this model, we would be able to socially distance our students, following the six-foot separation for our students. And in this model, we are looking certainly for a connection between the classroom and home. And this is something that we are in discussions to, to, to address. This idea that our students, when they're at home, can have some connection to that which is happening in the classroom, potentially even livestream from the classroom, is something that I know in our last task force meeting was a theme that came out very strongly from, from the board. And so we would be looking at a model where, when students are in school, they would be receiving instruction from their classroom teacher in person. And students who are at home would be receiving that instruction and then working to complete their work from home, either in a manner that allows teachers to check on them throughout that time, utilizing that livestream model, or somehow modify that due to screen time, potential screen time concerns. So this is a model that really begins our look at the idea of how school can be conducted when students need to be separated by six feet, as well as have students have a, a, an opportunity to come to school, to have a structured learning experience with their teachers. This A-Day, B-Day model is one that is seen, I know Dr. Fauci and others have spoken about the A-Day, B-Day model as one that has viability and also allows schools to continue the specials models as well as the AIS interventions that we spoke about in the, in, in, in our last session, in our last choice that we spoke about. At this time, I'll turn it over to the board for any questions you might have.
Um, I, I, I see a lot of value in this hybrid model, because at least the kids every other day are getting a full day of class. But for this model, I would really like to see, I don't really want to see on the day that they're home, that they're just kind of on their own again and given project-based learning or, or projects to do. I would really like to see it that, that it is livestreamed in, so that although they're not physically sitting in a classroom with the teacher in front of them, they're still getting, you know, that instruction. And I don't know, Joe, if it's possible, you know, and can interact perhaps. But I really like that, you know, AIS is present here and all the specials, they'll be getting their encores. So. So I see a lot of value in, in this.
You know, we spent a considerable amount of time discussing how that, how that remote learning model could take place. And if students are able to view the instruction that's in the classroom. You know, we, we really do believe that it would allow students, when they're home, to still feel connected to their school, to their teacher. As the board expressed at our last meeting, it would allow for a sort of daily contact between teachers and students. One of the things that we spent a lot of time talking about was the idea of what happens after that instruction. So we really envision a time, a model where in the, in the morning, that there's a morning meeting, the teacher and the students, both home and in school, are meeting and talking and connecting, followed by instruction. And we all know at the elementary level that teachers are not lecturing for an hour. We know that that's not happening at the high school either, junior, senior high either. But our instruction at the elementary level in particular are mini lessons, 10 to 15-minute lessons. Students then go to independent or collaborative work at that point. And so we have to be sure that when we look at this model, we're not thinking about the model as students staring at a Chromebook for six or seven hours a day, just listening to a teacher. That's not how classes operate, and that's not how we would operate in a, in a remote A-day, B-day model either. Students would receive that sort of 10-minute, 15-minute instruction, and then students would go to do the work that the students in the class are doing. We're talking about potentially using Zoom, so that the students who are home, we can put them in breakout rooms, so that they could work collaboratively when the students in the classes are working collaboratively. And then our teachers in the classroom can check in on those groups, just like they're checking in on the classes in school. That's why when we look at this model, it may seem initially like students will be staring at a screen for six or seven hours a day. And we want to be sensitive to that. We don't, no one wants our kids staring at a Chromebook for six or seven hours a day, particularly at our youngest ages. However, we don't envision it in that manner. So I, I do see benefits to this. It would be something that we have to continue to talk about, making sure that we can do that. I think, Joe, technologically, we have the ability to make this homeschool virtual remote connection occur, correct?
Yep.
We definitely do. There are different ways where we could share the information with the teacher and maybe the Promethean board being in the same screen, and/or then zooming directly from the Promethean board. So whatever material is on being presented there comes across to the student at home. So there are multiple ways with that information, and the students at home can be part of the class in a remote way.
Bob, and I just want to say, am I, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I actually, I actually like this model. I agree with Amy on a lot of points. I, I think it gives similar structure, structure that we, it, it seems back to normal, that they'll have the, the normal periods and whatnot. I also like the fact that a student that maybe, yes, can zoom and ask the question, but at least they get the next day, they're in the classroom. And if they have to have a direct contact with the teacher on that question, they can do that. And the only other thing that I wanted to say, I know you mentioned the students not being able to be six hours in front of a Chromebook, I do agree. But if you ever watch them play video games, they could play for 10 hours. But, you know, but I, I do, I do like this for a lot of reasons, because it gives us the mobility to go either way. If we end up having to go completely digital, or we have to, or we get back into the classroom. So I, I agree with those points.
The question that I have, oh, sorry, Amy, do you want to say something?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You go, you go.
Okay. I agree. I think there's a lot that's positive about this. I know there's, it also, although it won't totally answer some parent concern about kids, you know, being in a group where they're not seeing other children, because I can see in this group that we basically have to keep the cohort together. And that is one of the difficult, one of the situations that will arise with this is kind of how we, how we deal with families with different children and which days children are going to school. And so it's, we have to keep that in mind. But at least they will, in some way, be interacting with the other half of their class, even if it's remotely. And I think that's better than being totally with just, you know, that was a concern for some people. I think the key to this one is really how we're able to structure the day when they're not in school. And, and Bob, you started talking about that. And I think that this, the better we can do that, the better this model works. Really understanding that, my first thought of that, hey, we'll just livestream in, and a child's going to sit there and see what's going on all day. How realistic is that really in terms of six hours of being there when part of the day is putting things away or kids working independently? But really understanding how we can make this work, so that a child who's at home, when they're having the live streaming and being with their class, is really getting a worthwhile learning experience and some structure and teacher contact. I think that's really going to be the key. And if we can do that in a way that is really meaningful and make their day at home be more than just coming in to see, you know, a 20-minute video. And I know that what that also means is coordination with, if A group is there, then when B group comes in, do we need to go back and do some of what A group did to reinforce, you know, what B group didn't have? And then A group is watching that when they're at home. So I, I see that, that this is complicated, but if it can be worked out well, I think that this has a lot of promise. My only question is, I mean, A, B, what happens with, let's say, A is Monday, B is Tuesday, what happens on Friday? Is, does group A come in again? So is it, are we going to be Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Monday? You know what I mean? Is that how, will, will it work that way?
It'll be every, every other day, students will come in. So for some weeks, students will attend school twice a week. Some weeks, they will attend school three times a week.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
And I just want to, I, I agree with Janice that the day that they are home, I just think a schedule, you know, a, a structure that we put in place so that parents are given, you know, a schedule for the day that they're home and what is expected of the student, you know, and what time they're to go on and how they're going to fill in the time that they're not on, you know, online. Do you know what I mean? Like?
Right. If I, Amy, if I could, I agree with a lot of the points that have been raised on this hybrid model. I think that it does, it has a lot, a lot of benefits to it, including, as what was mentioned, the AIS program and the encore classes incorporated into the day. But I do agree that understanding at a more granular level of detail, what Janice had just said and what Amy said, understanding what that virtual day will look like. And to Amy's point, now the scheduling, I think would be extremely helpful.
Yep. I think-
In particular, you know, when is, when is the student expected to dial in? When is it then they drop off, when do they expect to dial, to dial in again? What are some of the preparations that they would have to make in order to be prepared for the next livestream session, things like that?
Thank you, Mrs. Starrett. I, I think, you know, we're echoing some of the things that we have heard from our parents, certainly in our recent parent focus group of schedules, of making sure that, you know, that there is a predictable sort of schedule and meaningful schedule for our students when they are, when they're home. And these are all really important themes that we'll have to also address. It, it is, it is a model that, like all of the models we're talking about, you know, it does preserve a master schedule as we would typically structure it. And if you look at really all, basically all of the models that we've looked at, you know, they very much mirror a typical master schedule. And we have to keep in mind that we could be in an A-day, B-day model on one week or one day. And we could then be in a, a remote virtual model the next day. And we want to be able to be sure that routines and procedures are in place so that we can seamlessly move from one to the other. And that's one of the benefits of the A-day, B-day model, that if, you know, if our good fortune occurred and all students were able to return to school on January 1st, students would simply go to school, following this, you know, very similar schedule that they followed at home. Of course, we have to, again, be thoughtful about what it looks like at home, particularly for our youngest students, and, and making sure that we do that in a thoughtful way. But thank you for those comments. They're very much in the forefront of our minds and important points.
Hey, Bob, I have one follow-up question, and it has to do with when you report to school. Would we be, if a student is an A-day, would we be using a family model across all buildings? So that, let's say, the Wright family, if I had students in multiple buildings, all go on day A? Or would we not? I'm just, I'm thinking, yeah, that's a good idea, because for working parents, they understand what day they're going. But the drawback is then all your kids are home on the same day learning. And if they need parental support, you're being pulled in a lot of directions. You know what I'm saying? So I'm wondering, I think some people would want one way, and other people would want another way, depending on the age of their kids.
It's a very good question, Mrs. Wright. Thank you for asking that. We are looking at alpha splits for our students. We see the need for a district-wide sort of consistency here. The details of the secondary level, you know, looking at a general split of A through L, M through Z will likely work. There may be some examples in that L and M area where students may need to be placed one way or the other. We will do that thoughtfully. But in general, for the benefit of families, we would very much like to have parents have a predictable on-and-off day with, with their students attending school or not. Okay. May I move to the next model, then?
Yes.
Mr. Belano, is that okay? Very good. The next model, which is a hybrid or reduced occupancy model, really refers to an AM and PM type model here. In other words, students would be coming to school for a half-day. And again, as we mentioned earlier, a half-day model could be applied to certain, a certain grade or grade levels to sort of reflect the, the needs and levels of independence of our students. This half-day model would mean that students would be, again, broken into two cohorts, and students would arrive in the morning or in the afternoon. And that arrival and dismissal procedures, which are going to be challenging, they have to be done right, and they're going to have to, they will take some time, that they will happen multiple times throughout the day, which is actually one of the concerns that we have about this model, that we, the amount of instructional time that is involved for students in, in reality, once they arrive to school, is first of all, limited. But then it's even more limited by the logistics that will be required to get students on and off of the buses for arrival and dismissal, especially our youngest children included there. In this case, should we follow this model? And this would mean that half of the students would be in school in the morning, and the other half in the afternoon. We envision that our specials or encores would be provided remotely in the half of the day when the students are not in school. That is a drawback. You know, we, we know that, that in-person providing of those lessons is certainly, you know, preferred. But it is the way that we would try to accommodate the need to include those programs in our, in our, in our coursework. There would be a strong benefit to this, and that students would be coming to school every day. So they would have that daily routine of coming to school. A factor also would be that there would be no lunch or recess in school for students. That would be an advantage to some extent, that we wouldn't have to navigate the recess and lunch. However, you know, it is just one of those items that would not be part of our daily routine. We would make every attempt to clean our classrooms in between sessions. In order to do that properly, we would need to hire additional custodial staff in order to clean that number of rooms within the time period that we have available. Another significant factor would be the cost for transportation. We are no longer just running single bus runs there to school and back. We are now running bus runs that really double our daily bus runs. The cost would be significant for that. We would also need to increase our security and traffic control for all of those arrivals or dismissals. Looking at this model and discussing it extensively with our principals recently, the, ultimately, the benefit of having students come to school every day, which is a significant benefit, is balanced, we believe, by the drawback of fairly limited instructional time. In reality, we're looking at about two hours and 15 minutes of daily instruction for students in school after we account for arrival and dismissal. I think that's being accurate, maybe slightly generous, but I think that's a real, a real number. And that's a lot of movement for young kids to come and go every day for that amount of instruction each day. So I turn it to the board for any questions that you might have.
I can, I mean, it's obvious that there are a lot of negatives with this one. I, I would be concerned that the specials and encores, all of them had to be given at home. And I would be concerned also, also with regards to socialization, because recess and lunch are the ti, the down times for the kids and for them to actually socialize. And I also see that this is a very heavy burden, not, you know, on the custodial class, staff, to get the building prepared in such a short turnaround to bring, you know, a completely different set of kids into the building. I, I think that some of the other models provide, you know, a better academic experience for the kids.
Well, what I, what I look at this too, is that when I'm comparing the two models in that, in the hybrid, I'd almost say choice one would be like a 90% favorite for me, with choice two would be a 10%. And not only for all the reasons that I think were mentioned as far as the limited instructions and the complication with the custodian staff. I also like in choice one, where all the students, even though half will be at home, they will see them. So by where in, in choice two, if there was 25 kids in a class, there's only going to be 12 that they're actually going to experience. Where at least in, I think in choice one, all 25 will have some interaction, even if that's limited to a Zoom-type of situation. So I, I kind of agree with Amy. I think if we had, if it came down to a hybrid, I would prefer choice one. I'm done.
Thank you, Anthony. Any other questions?
No, and I just, I, I, just off of what Anthony just said, I also think that the hybrid gives us an advantage with regards to, I mean, we've discussed how it's an advantage if January 1st, all the kids can come back into the classroom. But it also, if, if, you know, hopefully it doesn't happen, if we have to go virtual, it also has already provided a type of framework for the kids, because they've already been working, you know, one day at home. So it wouldn't be as big of a jump to have to move to a completely virtual model if, if we're already going to put all of these things in place.
I would just say that, you know, I want to say that I appreciate the time that went into thinking through this model. But I would agree with the comments that have been made so far in terms of some of the drawbacks. It may also be a little more difficult to manage. Also, with parents, I'm trying to think of people with working. I don't know if it would or not. People are clearly going to have different feelings. But for the most part, I would echo the comments that have been made so far in terms of comparing this choice with the first one.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I agree. And I think it's also important, you know, given that school probably, I think is, I think it starts three months from today, right? That's September 7th, which I, or maybe September 1st. So not to put any time pressure on, with the idea that we could start to take some, some choices out. I think the thinking around this is really good. When I first read it, I'm like, okay, maybe it could work. But I think, I, I think as we, as we go through this process, narrow ourselves down to, you know, you know, one option for kind of, you know, we have a hybrid, we have one or two things that we're really going after, plus the virtual model, we'll be, we'll be mu, we'll be in a much better position to actually make it happen, rather than trying to explode five. So I think there's a great, great sense of exploration around the half-day model. There, there's something about the consistency of having kids coming in every day. But I think, you know, like, let's, I, I, my, my push would be, let's take it- But I think, you know, like, let's, I, I, my, my push would be, let's take it off the list, recognize some good thinking and move to having two or three things that we're really focused on.
Thank you, Mr. Firebird. I would say yet, I'm sorry.
I just have a quick question and I'm sorry if this was already discussed. My dogs were barking, so I couldn't hear for a second. With this model, what would special education look like? Would that be offered at home? And would they be getting AIS with this model? I'm sorry if this was already discussed. Like I said, they were barking pretty loud.
It, it wasn't, it was not discussed there. It's a very good question and, you know, I think it would be. I don't know that there would be one single answer to that. I think that that would be reliant on the students' needs and such. But I would imagine that at least the building level services that we offer would likely have to take place at the time when they are not in school. At the special education services, I think we would make that decision based on the needs of the students included.
Okay.
But I would say very possible that some of those services would be provided when the students are not in school and done remotely.
Yeah, because my only concern is, you know, sometimes with, if a student is receiving, you know, speech and OT and. And resource room, you know, that could take up a good chunk of the time that they would be in school. So that would just be a concern of mine and, you know, definitely like it being offered at home if we were to go with this model. But I do agree with everyone else. This is, this one is not my, my favorite.
Again, I just mentioned briefly that we have the option of. A half day model might be something that we apply potentially to our youngest students. You know, in a manner for, for a variety of reasons. But at this point, the feedback that I'm hearing is very much A day, B day is much more viable. And a model that we are feeling much more comfortable with at this point. So thank you. And I thank.
Can I say one thing? I, I do want to be clear because, and I'm glad you said that. My comment does not mean that the, at the kindergarten level. Or possibly if you're exploring K1 in particular, that that might not be something that could be seen as preferable. I know we've discussed that the district did have half day kindergarten for a long time. So looking when I'm, I think, and I would venture, it might be for other people that were commenting on it as a district wide kind of strategy. Or in the larger sense, and that's not to say to discount, looking at it where it might be most, the most appropriate way for learning to go.
I, I, you know what, Janice, I'm glad you brought that up because I do agree. I think the kindergarten level with that split session, I think that's a viable way to go. And if that could work, I think that would ease up some of the, I, I don't know what the complications of dealing that at Goose Hill. So I do agree with Janice, you know, if that model works and we can do that in kindergarten, doesn't mean I'm against it for, you know, for that. I just wanted to.
But I think that when we look at Goose Hill kindergarten in first grade, I don't know that I'm in favor of that model. Because again, they won't be getting, the specials and encores will be at home. They're in school for just two hours. You know, I, it's just two hours of instruction the whole day. And I, I don't know, I, I see that they would miss, you know, a lot. I, I'm not saying if everybody wants to do that for kindergarten and first grade, I'm just not sure. I mean, you're still going to have the problems with regards to custodians trying to clean a building, turn it over and all of that. And, you know, I think for the kids, I really want them to see if we can, you know, have. A day that they kind of, that they're experienced what they should be experienced and getting the most that we can provide. If, if we have to do something like this.
And I won't speak for Mrs. Herschlein, but I believe that as our conversations continued. You know, the, the A day, B day model is one that certainly was something that we wanted to explore further for Goose Hill as well. So we'll continue our conversations in that area as well.
Yeah, Bob, one thing I want to mention, thinking about Goose Hill. I mean, when we did have half day kindergarten years ago, the kids had specials. They had specials every day. So they didn't have to forego that, you know what I mean, in their schedule back then. So I'm curious, you know, what program we use, you know, because they had art, they had music, they had gym. And maybe another thought is, and I'm just throwing this out there. Doing like the half day kindergarten for, you know, as, as a program. And maybe doing the split schedule just for grade one, you know what I'm saying? So that you, that building can almost be a little microcosm of itself. And then maybe doing the AB day in the two through six. So it's just like another thing to throw out there as an idea. I mean, I'm sure you guys have fleshed this all out or will think about it, but just leaving that out there also.
I appreciate you mentioning it, Mrs. Wright, because I think one of, after this conversation and many others that we've had about this. It would be really looking at those drawbacks that we pointed out about that. That model that we had mentioned earlier, which was choice two of our 100% attendance. If we were to apply that at Goose Hill and have an abbreviated date for our kindergarteners. How significant would the impacts that we described would be on the first graders and the kindergarteners themselves? So we'll flesh that out further and come back with more information on that.
I think what we're trying to make sure, at least what I am, is that you don't feel that you can't look at these children. And evaluate the program possibly in a different way for our kindergarteners. I don't know about first grade, but that as the educators that. You should feel, at least the way I look at it, is open to possibly suggest to us that a different model could work for our youngest learners. And you would suggest that, that you would not use that same model or would not. Tell us that that would be the one that you would be your first choice for the older children. That's all I was trying to say.
Thank you.
And Bob, just one, one point of clarification. I, I, first, I agree with many of the comments that have been made in comparing these, these two models. I just wanted to clarify for the encore program. When it is conducted remotely in the half day model, those classes, attendance will be required, not optional, correct?
That's correct.
Where they were optional in the virtual platform that, that we, we had for the last few months. Now going forward, should this model be adopted, they will be required for the student to attend.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. I'm just, just one, one question. Going back to the A day, B day model. Will there be an opportunity for any cleaning to take place in the classrooms? When the students are in there for the, the full day?
May I ask Mr. Stuccio to address that?
Yeah, and the AB day model, the rooms would be sanitized at night before the next cohort came in. During the day, there would be a cleaning of the high touch areas, the door knobs, the bathrooms, et cetera. But there, there would be no cleaning inside the classrooms during, during the school day.
I know that we want to move on, so I, but I saw Mrs. Herschlein come on for a minute or a second or two and then disappear. So may, I don't know if she had something as the principal of Goose Hill that she, you know. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I don't know if we, if we cut you off, if you had wanted to say something to us and we kind of talked over you.
No, I was, I was preparing to respond if someone had a question. I mean, I appreciate the flexibility, the flexibility to look at Goose Hill differently, certainly. The half day model for kindergarten. My concern about the half day model is the number of hours of instruction are fewer than the AB model. But certainly with kindergarten, we have had that model in the past. And certainly two and a half, two and a quarter of hours of instruction for four and five year olds. You know, in some ways can suffice. They can go home and do the things that we send them home to do. And the playing that they learn so well from. So there would be a sacrifice of certainly instructional time. I don't think we could expect four and five year olds necessarily to get back home, have lunch. You know, have a little downtime and then come back on for instructions. I think that, that, that's hard for little ones, though. Too many transitions in the day. With regard to the model where everyone's in. That I, I had proposed the, having the half day kindergarten for that model. Because I didn't see the efficacy of a five year old being in another room with another adult, a different adult daily. I thought that was problematic for a young child. We could do that with first grade, though I believe after they've had an experience at school already. So I think, you know, the flexibility of those two models for Goose Hill, different from the upper grades, is something we can explore further. The AB model is also, I think, would be a good model for the little ones. Because they'd be prepared all day in a regular school model. You know, going through the cadences and the nuances of a regular school day whereby the teacher would then prepare them for the next day. And the work they'd be doing. And certainly the benefit of, of the virtual experience should we need to go that route in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Any other questions on this portion? If not, I'll move to the final one, which we're calling a virtual or remote model here. Really are looking at, looking at remote education moving forward through a virtual learning experience. And in this case, this model would be in the unfortunate circumstance that our students would not be able to attend school. Due to the coronavirus pandemic. We hope and certainly pray that this does not happen. However, we really look at this as having an opportunity for students to have an experience, which is. You know, as similar as possible to a typical master schedule. Similar to what we were talking about for the day, the students would be home in an A day, B day model. And Mrs. Brogan, I think you mentioned what happens if we transition from one to the other. If we're in an A day, B day model to start. And students have an experience of connecting with their teachers and their classmates through a virtual means, through a remote means. They would then be much more readily able to transition to a, a completely remote model. We look at this as mirroring the. Mirroring the, the master schedule as it's designed. So that we're maintaining those special area programs, we're maintaining the interventions and supports that our students receive that are so critical. And one of the things again that we will continue to mention is balancing the amount of screen time with the authentic learning experiences. That will be so important. And that's a lot of the conversation we've had that will continue. Is that as students are working with teachers remotely, whether it be every day or every other day. How we can do that in a way that provides students to support and instruction from their teachers that they so desperately need. While also respecting that screen time. One of the things we've heard from our board members, from our parents or our focus group and others. Is a need for a schedule, a need for predictability, and a need to make sure that students are receiving the. The support and instruction from their teachers that's necessary. We believe we've learned a lot from the spring and the fall experience, we believe would be much more robust and much more reflective of a typical school day. Any questions from the board at this time? We hope that this is not necessary. Mr. Pielano, not hearing any questions. May I transition to the secondary level at this time?
Please do.
Okay, I, at this time, Dr. Boland, are you on the call?
I am, yeah.
Give me, I can't see everybody with the screen sharing. I'm going to ask Mr. Monastero, if you would, to share those scheduling options. Again, you'll see the schedules to be structured in a similar way as to our elementary program. And so I asked Dr. Boland, if he would, to walk us through these different options. And we would like to provide the board with opportunities to ask questions. You will note that some items are still on the options list from the last session. We left those on to be certain that the board has the opportunity to provide that feedback. That may not have been able to be done at our last session. Jim, I know you'll sort of preface those options. And we might have even curtailed one of them. I'm not, I'm not 100% sure at this point. But if you could just walk us through those items, those options, we would appreciate it.
Absolutely. Good morning, everyone. Just as a way to sort of set the, the context. So when we talk about school open with 100% daily attendance. And this sort of goes, goes back to some of the earlier comments. This is options that we've come up with that are either aspirational or have something. Or if, let's say there was a prevailing feeling from the, the board or the community that no matter what we do, we have to have everybody in the building every day. The, the reason why I call these aspirational is that, given social distancing requirements. It is nearly impossible to have 100% daily attendance at the junior, senior high school. So you see in choice one, we would just keep the standard master and bell schedule. We would try to limit our building mobility and interactions. We would be unable to meet this, this six feet requirement. Again, we're still waiting to see if that would be what the recommendations are. We believe it will be. And that's why we think that this is an aspirational model. Again, as we went over with the elementary model, not really a viable option, but we wanted to include this option in here to show you that we've thought about. Things that we could do if, for instance, we were able to not have to meet the six foot requirement. Or that would be limited for, for students, let's say, under 18, if they're wearing a mask, we might be able to put more students in a room. And so some of the things that we would do, we would not use lockers, create unidirectional hallways. We would limit larger gatherings like lunch and PE. We would set lunch desks up in the new gym, six feet apart. Again, we're sort of flying a little blind with this option because we don't know what the specific requirements would be yet. But again, like we, we said, most likely not a viable option, but wanted to show you that we were thinking about if. If the desire was to have every student in the building every day. So that would be in choice one. In choice number two, we, we took that a little bit further and said, well, what could we do with, with our schedule? And so one of the things that we came up with was creating a split schedule. So that would be a 12 period day. Students in grades seven through nine would go periods one to nine. Students in grades 10 through 12 would go through periods four through 12. Again, we might not be able to meet the six foot requirements. But the, the splitting of the schedule would allow for reduced percentages for part of the day. So for instance, only half the building would be in periods one, two and three. So we'd be able to spread out some classes a little bit more. Also, in addition, during lunch periods, we might be able to utilize some additional classrooms. We would be able, we would have to put together a new master schedule. Obviously, because we would have, our, our day would be extended, we would go until 4:27. You see that in bullet number four. We would have costs associated with that. We would need new staffing, more staffing. Alternate space could be used. Again, if we split classes. Again, much like the model that we talked about at, at the elementary level, we're having TAs staff a room. While the teacher had half the class in one room via cam teaching, while the other half of the class could be in another room. Again, this would allow for students to be in the building 100% of the time. But we would have to alter the schedule and what that would look like. Again, it also reduces capacity for activities and sports. Increased bus runs because you'd have to bring in other students, period four. And you'd also have to take half the students home, period nine, and then the other half again, period 12. Again, not meaning to gloss over these two options, but we wanted to illustrate for you that we are thinking about what we could do. If, if, if we needed to have 100% full students in the building all day, every day. Again, like the elementary models, we don't think that this is a viable option, especially for, for our building. To be able to do something along these lines, but wanted to give you some of those details. Any questions on those two?
Yeah, given that frame, Jim, we should ask for any questions at the board, maybe on items one and two.
You know, Jim, I just want to thank you very much, obviously a tremendous, you and the other principals as well. A lot of thought has gone into all of these options and, and I really appreciate it. My only, and, and I know that you said that these were inspirational, but aspirational. But I just, my only quest with, with choice two would just be, you know, a lot of our students at the high school, they're not split by grade level. They, they can take other classes and so. Ninth grader taking chemistry with 10th or 11th graders. So that would just be, you know, a concern with how you'd be able to get that worked out.
Right, absolutely. And that's why, you know, we'd have to put together a new master. There's things we would have to do. We might have to create ninth grade only chemistry class, something along those lines. You know, if we had to do it. Again, not ideal. And it is something, though, if there is a, you know, prevailing feeling amongst the community that, yes, we need kids in the building all day, every day. You know, for, for students, this is, these are one of the two models that we would have to go with.
Thank you.
Sure.
I, I have a question. Either one of these choices, would the Nest and H1 still be something students can use in the capacity? Either one of these choices, would the Nest and H1 still be something students can use in the capacity that they've always used it?
Yes, we still would have those available. Again, given social distancing. We would have to take a look at what the, what they would look like in terms of those areas. Especially, again, we, we don't even have recommendations on what lunch would look like for large, large group gatherings. So when you have 150 students seated in the cafeteria, what, what might that look like? So. But again, utilizing the Nest and H1, more likely H1. Nest may be used for classes during non, non lunch period times, so periods one, two, three and eight, nine. We might be able, we might have to use the Nest for larger class space. So it may be available during lunch, but not in the configuration that we might see it with the flex furniture, the couches, the, you know, the closed seating that we, we have right now in there. Great.
Thank you, Jim.
Sure. Any other questions on choice one or two for the aspiration of 100% everyone back all day? All right, great. Excellent.
Yeah.
So our hybrid and reduced occupancy model, what we would want to do is 50% occupancy in each room, which, which we're basing that off of a number of approximately 12. We would split the building A through L, M through Z generally. And I'll explain a little bit about that in a moment. So that we would do that split on an, on an A day, B day. And actually, it would be split as an A1, B1, A2, B2. Because we do have classes that meet every other day. So for those that are meeting every other day, they would, they would meet on the, on the opposite letter day, let's say. We would live stream on the days when the students are home that allow for daily interaction with teachers and students. One of the considerations just to think about is screen time consists of, for many students, eight to nine periods a day of 40 minutes of instruction for the full instructional day. So it is a tremendous amount of screen time when students are home. And we would need additional technology resources as, as Joe Monastaro discussed earlier about hooking up webcams for Mathium boards and things like that. On this model, the split would be, so for instance, you know, myself, Jim Bolan, most likely I'm gonna be on that A day. Every day because I'm at the top of the alphabet. But, you know, my office assistant, Christine McCloskey, she may be on that day one or on that day two. And when it comes to that Ls, Ms and Ns, we really need to take a look at hand schedule and look at what those, those schedules look like. It could be that they are always on the day two. Because, you know, nine out of nine of their periods fit, fall on the day two. If four out of their periods fall on the day one and five fall on the day two, what we'll have to do is take a look and hand schedule that. And so they would ultimately be on one or the other. But we would want to then say, okay, if, if we have this, we may have more students than 12 in a room, so we will have to find an alternative space for them. That's all work that we can do. And that's what, where you see that point up there, we'll need to find an alternate space for half sized classes that are larger than 12 that don't fit into those rooms. And so that would be our hybrid model that we would work toward. Other models don't really seem to fit the, the, the seven, eight, nine split or the 10, 11, 12. And again, this would bring students into school every other day. And Janice, you had asked a question before. It would fit along that three days, one week, two days the next. Because the groups would come in on an every other day model as they would be moving forward through the school year. Any questions on, on this model for the junior, senior high school? Great. The best thing about this model is because it includes all of the periods, we don't really have a, a loss of any of the support services or any of the relectives that students might have had in their schedule. And we can also keep the master schedule as it stands right now, which is very good about moving forward. Some of the things that we may need to take a look at or things like our drop ad period. Because as students start to move classes, that would change the, the amount of the half students that are in the room. So again, that just takes a, a little bit of the, the handwork that we have to do, but we, we think that that is possible to do.
Thank you, Jim.
Sure.
Can we transition to the virtual and remote now at this point? Yeah.
Yep. So for our virtual models, we, you know, we, I, I thought we had very good success at the junior, senior high school during, during the spring. And so we have two virtual models to, to think about and consider. The first would be to just follow the daily bell schedule as it is at home. Students are familiar with the schedule as it is. It gives a consistency of instruction throughout the year, especially if we are in and out. It could be that there may be a spike or there's something happens where we may have to close for a couple of weeks. And we can just go right to that bell schedule and move forward with, with the instruction as if we were in the building. Again, we just bring this up as a consideration. Screen time consists of eight to nine periods a day of 40 minutes periods of instruction. Students, you know, between, if, if they're not taking a lunch, they'll only have four minute breaks in between each class. So 40 minutes and then a four minute break, then 40 minutes again. So it is just something to consider. I know that they, they can sit and play video games for hours on end, but now they're gonna have to produce during those 40 minute times. And then we want to make sure that we, we take that into consideration of what those online classes begin to look like through those 40 minute instructional periods. So that would be a very basic virtual model that we would have, which is just following the bell schedule. The difference between spring and fall is that we were in sort of that emergency digital learning mode. And if we are able to, and we have to go to this model, we can give parents and students and staff enough time and, and lead time to understand what that would look like. So they would be able to prepare for following that bell, that bell schedule while at home.
Jim, I, I appreciate what you just said about that last bullet point about screen time.
Sure.
While I think that I see the, the value of the model before and how it flows into this model, I do think that that's really important.
Sure.
Thinking about and working through, you know, how many of our kids have a full schedule? How many, you know, periods are off? What does that look like? And what would those 40 minutes look like? And how, if we would need to tweak that in a way that still provides robust instruction, but really recognizes that. I think having seen people work now for months, an entire day at a screen, sitting. Adults who can do it, but that there are, there are ramifications and there are, some people can't do it in the same way. It, it's not totally without some consideration as to if we need to tweak it a little. If those 40 minute periods need to have a little more time. I don't know what modifications we would do. But if we go in this way, I really would like to see more thought about that so that we address as many needs as we can and do it with forethought. That not just a matter of putting someone, telling someone that you will have, you know, four minutes in between to run to the bathroom and come back. And be sitting on a screen for 40 minutes the entire day. I think that is a very different experience. And I'm not trying, I, I am very much in favor of what we're making the experience robust as much as possible like, you know, a regular school day and having the learning be there and the interaction. But I do think we need to really think about if we're in these kind of models, making it sustainable.
I agree.
Um, I agree with that, but I, I also think that in thinking about this, I don't think it's realistic to think that they have eight or nine classes where something's going on for the full 40 minutes. It seems to me that class, that, that the classes that are taught, whether it's English or whatever. I mean, I don't know of any teacher who just stands up there for 40 minutes and students watch them. So, you know, I, I totally agree with Janice and we have to, you know, be mindful and stuff, but I, I think, you know, it could be made to work.
Absolutely. And, and that's part of our PD plan that we would work with our teachers of what, what a 40 minute online lesson looks like. And then it should not be a lecture for 40 minutes. I never want to see a lecture for 40 minutes. And so what are the activities that students are doing? What, what, what is the collaboration? What, how are they interacting with each other? And that's something that's gonna be very important, especially if we move into the new school year. Because you have new teachers with new students who don't know each other yet. As opposed to in the spring where we had classes and, and class procedures and policies that were in place. And, and again, it was in that emergency mode where just, okay, let's sort of follow along as opposed to now we're coming in. And not only do you not know me as your instructor, but you may be in a class with students who you haven't been in class with before. So we need to work on how that looks, what that looks like in the beginning of, of the school year especially, but also what those 40 minutes looks like.
I, I just want to add that I want to thank everybody that's involved, all the building principals, the administrators. Because what you, what I see here from the last time we met, you listened to us, that we wanted to make, whether it's 100% daily attendance, whether it's the hybrid or even the virtual. That we are going to have somewhat close to what a normal schedule would have been. And, you know, when we look at the virtual and you talk about, maybe we make him 32 minutes or give an eight minute break. That's, that we could worry about when the time comes. But I really believe that everybody has done a tremendous amount of work. So I don't know where we're going from here at this point, but I do want to say, I really want to thank everybody because it seems that you listened and I think you worked in, no matter what, when we end up in, and again, it may be a transition, I think it's the all viable model. So thank you.
Great, thank you. We have one more model.
Hi, Jim. Got you a couple of questions. Sorry, I had a little technological breakdown. I had to move devices here. But I have one question. I don't know if it was addressed. In terms of an A B model with science labs, how do we handle that? Because, you know, if you're going in every other day, you're either getting double science or you're getting gym typically. How is that gonna work?
Right. So what we would have to do is work with the science teachers to figure out how they would be able to do those labs. Either every other day or two days in a row. So for instance, it might be that some, while they're working on the lab in class. Those that are home are doing pre-work for the lab. And then when they come back in the next day, there's, those students will do the lab and the other students might work on their write-up, let's say. So they'll be able to alternate back and forth between what they can do when they're physically in the building and when they're not.
Okay.
Other considerations too, like testing. How, how, you know, and again, those are things we would have to work out, but how would we, how do we take care of testing on a day when, okay, Tuesday, we're giving the test, half of you are home and half of you are not. Do we, do we split, do we give two different tests? Do we use GoGuardian to be able to track, you know, the students that are at home? Do we make sure that one time, you know, it's when the, the B, you know, the M through Z is at home and the next time is when the A through L is at home? So it's at least balanced between that here. So those are, those little details and intricacies we'd have to work out if we're in that model.
Okay, terrific. Two other follow-up questions, which is in terms of like doing A B and doing virtual learning every day, you know, on the off days for students. Is making sure you have accountability, that students are logging on and they're attending class. Just as if they are, if they cut class in the high school in the building, if you don't dial in and you're not sick from school and your mom hasn't called you in sick. You were, you're not in class and that is, there's repercussions to that. So I just want to make sure if we use this model, we have, it's very clear to the students and to the parents what's expected of our high school and, you know, junior high students. And there's accountability there because, and also the issue of having the camera on, you know, the camera needs to be on. You know, if you're engaged in class, not camera off and we don't know if you're there or not. So that's.
Absolutely. Well, one of the things we've also thought about, which is that, you know, Bolan, I'm on, I'm on day one and right, you're on day two. That, that means that I have to be full on those day, you know, on those eight days. And I can't just stay home both A and B day and say, well, class is live, so I'll just do class from home every day. So, you know, it, it's again, expressing to the parents and, and, and the, and the students, the importance of this model was created because we think it's vitally important for students to be in the building, having physical interaction with their, with their teachers and with, with, with students. And so it is important that on the day you're scheduled to be there, that you do go to school and you don't just say, well, I'll catch the, I'll catch the online version at home. And so that's something we would talk about too in terms of.
Okay, terrific. And the last question, this has to do with, I know we haven't really gotten to the ground level about dining and the cafeteria, but you know, everyone loves outdoor dining. And we have our night area, we can add some tables to and let the kids sit outside since the circle's closed. You know what I mean? If, if give more opportunities for kids to be eating outside in the fresh air when possible, since that's probably the best alternative for eating. That, you know, the department has stated.
Right. And that's something that we, we've talked about too, about maybe setting up some not so permanent, but tents outside. You know, along the, the front of the building that we could set up so that students be able to do something like that. Yeah. Absolutely.
Thank you. And I, I just wanted to just make a comment on the, the A B day. I do find value in that, not just from everything that's been said on this entire Zoom meeting right now. But also because I, I know that in New York City, they've given parents the choice of whether to return their kids to the classroom or not come fall. I know that nothing has come down from SED yet. They're meeting on the 13th. I don't know if they'll give us guidance on that, but I think that we should, you know, I think that the A B day does prepare us. That should all of a sudden, you know, we have to go that route where we're saying to parents, you decide. That that would lend itself for those decisions to be made without us having to go and reinvent things, you know, so it would be an easy transition. So that would be an added benefit to that.
Great. Any other questions on that? We do have one more virtual model.
Yep. Jim, before you do that, I just want to thank Mrs. Brogan for mentioning that because that is one of the things that came up in our parent focus group is that, that option. And we are waiting direction from the state as other state education departments have provided to schools in that regard. So thank you for raising that. That was on my list, but I missed it somehow. So thank you. Jim, last model?
The last one, again, we talked a little bit about this, but I fleshed it out a little bit more. If we were to go virtually, one of the other things, and this is speaking to, to what Janice was talking about. Is to do some kind of modified block schedule if we are in a full virtual mode. So periods we would do on, on day one or day, a day A1, periods one through four, and then a period five would be for clubs and activities. And then on day B1, we would cover periods five to nine. And then A2, we would cover the alt, if, if there is an alternate day for an every other day class, let's say that didn't meet on A1, they would meet on A2 and the same then for B2. While it doesn't allow for daily contact with every teacher, the block does allow for some in-depth work between teachers and classmates. And so again, not saying that this would be an hour long lecture. But you, the use of breakout rooms, the use of collaboration between students allows for, again, when we're thinking about that, the ability of the students to connect with other students of those they haven't been in classes with before. A model like this might allow for a little bit more of that collaboration with students. Clubs and activities built into the day for a little bit also provides some opportunities for students to connect outside of academic time that's built in, in a period. Again, it's just there for, for something to think about, sort of food for thought. If we were to say, be, well, you know, i- if it comes down and says, we're not, we're not going back to school until the, you know, the start of the winter semester. Maybe it's something we think about if we know that we are definitely gonna be out for an extended period of time. Again, fostering those connections between students, student to student connection, providing activity blocks for them to meet with their clubs, to be able to continue to have those go on. And then also to allow for more in-depth work that they're doing. Again, they may not see every teacher every day, but they are with teachers every day in that either one to four or five to nine block. So that would be a, another option, thinking about what a virtual model could look like.
Um, Jim, with, with regards to that model. I mean, I'm hoping that some of the benefits you said about that model is exactly what we're doing on the opposite days for our students in the A B type realm, like, you know, the breakout rooms I hope are gonna be utilized. The collaboration between the students and the in-depth learning I hope is gonna take place on the A B days as well. I don't know, you know, to, if we go virtually to all of a sudden move to a different type of model that we were perhaps already using the A B day and then to move from that onto this. I, I'm not sure I see the value in that. I, I think you raised a good question with regards to the clubs, whether that's something that we want to discuss and perhaps do with the A B model that, you know, if we're gonna run clubs, how could we do those? Would they be after school? You know, that, that's, that would, you know, that's a whole conversation, I guess. And could be viable. I.
Sure. The way, the way that we look at this is that if, if, if we're coming back in the fall in a hybrid, if they, if they, you know, this, we, we give our plan to the state and they say, great, you can open at 50% capacity. And then let's say something were to happen where we have to go in a, in a containment mode for a month, let's just say. Then I would, I would move from our hybrid choice one to our virtual choice one. Keep the periods as they are. We're there for a short amount of time. If we put the plan and, or things transpire in, around the country and in the state that we, we are, are heading. If we put the plan and or things transpire in around the country and in the state that we we are heading into a more restrictive environment that we have to be in, then if we're, if we know, like, for instance, we're going to the after semester, then I might suggest that we do something as a choice two, because then we come back with a fresh semester start at at the in January or at the at the beginning of February. So I wouldn't suggest that we go to choice two, like you're saying, Amy, I would agree. If we're in for a bit of time and then we go to a whole new schedule. Or I would only think about choice two if it's something that we knew that we were going to be out for an extended period of time before we even start school. I think the hybrid to the choice one is probably the best back and forth. But again, we, you know, each week and each day, we hear different varying accounts of what's happening. So we wanted to put a different, a few choices out there just so we were prepared for whatever scenario might come our way.
I just, you know, it concerns me a little bit with giving classes every other day or, you know, especially with like math. Some kids need that every day. You know, so just concerns in that realm for me.
I understand. Absolutely.
And Jim, I appreciate how you, I I appreciate how you framed it in that, you know, to have a predictable, familiar schedule to start the year would probably behoove us so that we have that flexibility of transitioning from one to the other with a familiar model. This is something that to have explored and thought out as you've done provides us an option later on, should we need it and should we see that our current model is not reaping the benefits that we want? Mrs. Wright, did I interrupt you or Tara? I'm sorry. I hope I didn't interrupt someone. Did anyone else have any questions in regards to that? Mr. Palano, can I then thank our principals for their outstanding work in in devising these schedules, fleshing them out? It's been extraordinary, their their efforts and their their planning and our collaboration has been extensive and lengthy, exhausting, and it feels like really important work. And I I just want to just thank them for their commitment and hard work to prepare for this unthinkable scenario that we're facing here. It's only going to benefit our students and that's their mission and drive as it is for all of us. If I may, I'd like to just transition briefly to the second agenda item, Mr. Palano, unless board members had a question or comment before we move forward.
I think that's fine.
Okay. The second item on the agenda is a parent survey and I would like again to thank our principals, our advisory groups, as well as our central office leaders and especially our focus group parents who joined several of our board members and myself for a meeting last week. We set a limit on the length of the meeting to be no more than five hours. Happy to report that the meeting was a brief two and a half hour session where we discussed the circumstances that we've been facing. As you could tell from that, the length of that conversation, there was much to share with us. And we're really grateful to our parent leaders for their willingness to be part of that focus group. So much of what was shared were things that we were thinking about. But other things were sort of accentuated as being even more important than perhaps we may have thought at the beginning. The result of that focus group and the input of our principals, advisor groups and central office leaders who have done a phenomenal job as well is resulting in a survey that we plan to administer to the community, to the parents in the next day or two and asking for responses by Monday of next week. And that will also help us to inform areas such as the scenarios that we mentioned today. And we will certainly look at the survey in its draft form with a fresh set of eyes now that we've received feedback from the board. Some of the scenarios that may initially have appeared in the draft of the survey may no longer be asked about based on that feedback, but we'll look at that. Also included in the survey will be transportation questions. One of the things our focus group last week was alluding to us is, you know, there are parents who are very much decided not to send their children on a bus regardless of the circumstances, whether the buses are a smaller in number or larger in number, or whether or not they're vans or whether or not they're full buses. So we don't, we very much want to get information from our parents of their intentions and leanings right now as to whether or not they plan to use the transportation offered by the district. That can be very helpful to Mr. Stuccio and our team here to plan for the number of buses that we might need, given the different circumstances. We're also going to ask in our survey about health and safety, particularly as it relates to P P E face masks. We've received feedback from parents both in the focus group as well as in other communications about people's strong feelings about students being required to wear a mask for an entire day. There's conflicting science and opinions out there about that. And certainly there's feedback, certainly we've received that masks are a critical component to stopping the spread of the coronavirus. So we are going to ask our parents about their leanings in terms of face coverings and those requirements and as students return to school in September. We're also going to ask our parents about remote learning. As we've referred to in the past, our digital learning plan, but remote learning moving forward and asking their their viewpoints on some of the models that we talked about today. We also wanted to ask based on the focus group about parent and student support. The social emotional needs of our students as well as the the support that parents might need in terms of supporting their children in a partial or complete home learning model. We want to be sensitive to those needs and Mr. Simon is working with our teams to establish a parent university in the fall regardless as to our model to make sure that our parents have the support to support their children. And I know Ms. Campbell will be working to make sure that the S E L components are addressed through those workshops as well. The survey will be due on Monday, July thirteenth. I'll send out another reminder on Friday because we would like a very robust response to this survey. And I I I certainly thank everyone who contributed to its construction. Does the board have any questions or comments in regards?
I have a question. Uh, yes, um. One of the things after that meeting that I had been thinking about in a similar way when we discussed transportation and the idea that we would ask people, although you wouldn't necessarily be able to hold people to certain kinds of decisions that that's a legality, but asking people what their leanings are. I was thinking the same kind of questions in terms of lunch could be important because there may be people that depending upon what model we're in, will feel that regardless of what our model is and how we're doing things, that they're going to send their child with lunch and they will, so and it it may also have to do with where they eat, but more, you know, just to kind of think that through a little bit. Because we may be able to get some input because there are some people who, if you would talk to them, would say in even in a regular situation, my child almost never bought lunch. Or my child always did, and my intention now is that I'm going to send my child with lunch every day. Or it depends on whether or not you're going to be providing cold lunches, hot lunches. So I I think that a little bit of thought on that and maybe talking with Jerry to about, you know, how we would be structuring the food preparation and given if we would be eating in a classroom, what are we thinking that we might provide? That might give us just a little bit of input as to how parents will feel about different options, which would give us a little bit of possibility of having some forethought and guidance. So that was something I thought about later.
Thank you. We'll let we'll add some items in that regard as well. Thank you. And I know Mr. Stuccio has been working with Mrs. Tiger about the how food service would operate, pre-ordering of lunches, boxing, et cetera, James?
Yeah. So we're working on right now is a preorder system for all schools. So the night before, a parent would need to preorder the meal for the next day. At the elementary level, those meals would be prepared by classes and be put on a cart and brought down by food service worker or an aide to that classroom for delivery. Everything would be individually wrapped and and prepared, you know, in a to-go kind of container. High school would be similar. Everything would need to be pre-ordered. However, we wouldn't be able to deliver it. There would need to be a pickup station and each of the meals would be, you know, again, in a to-go kind of container and it would be labeled with that student's name. So so that's what we're working on right now.
So I think if we could generally, you know, without, again, this is all exploratory, let people know that this is the type of lunch that we would be offering and individually wrapped, pre-order kind of thing. Do you think you would be interested in participating? I I just, it's not a high, I think that that's worth, if we're going to do a parent survey, giving us a little bit of information. There may be some people that when they hear how you're really thinking it through, will feel yes and will feel more comfortable. And other people say, it doesn't really matter what you do. I won't be using it. That's all. I just think you should explore it.
Well, well, my question is, you're sending out the survey through the email portal. Is that is that correct? Has there been, has there been any thought about also sending out Mickey telephone? I forget what we call that, the mass telephone, just to alert the public that there is a survey and we want to have this. I think it's because you're giving a time period. I I think that might be helpful. Even other board members can make an opinion on it. But I think because of the urgency on this, I think that would be something that might be that might help.
We'll do one of our all calls, Mr. Palano, with a text message, phone call and email to reflect the importance of our parents participating. It's a great suggestion. I I have a feeling Mr. Monastar was planning on doing that anyway, but but just in case, we'll we'll make that point to him. Thank you for the thumbs up, Joe. Any other questions or comments? Well, we are certainly, you know, in a in a it's hard to describe this context of our world right now as a better place, but we are in a little bit better of a place today. And that's not by accident. That's because of the hard work and dedication of our board, our leaders, our teaching staff, our parents, everybody who's contributed to this effort. Our next task force meeting is scheduled for July twenty third, I believe. At that time, the district is going to be required very close to that time, shortly thereafter, likely to present a reopening plan to New York State as to how our district will plan on doing that. I can assure you, our district, it is doing very well in terms of timing for it to be set up successfully for that deadline. I think the narrowing of our options that we've accomplished in just the last two meetings are going to provide the focus and guidance for our leaders to be sure that we are as ready as possible for those reopening plans. I know that we're looking intently at the purchasing of items for our classrooms that will enhance the safety and security of our students and staff, and we're working diligently on that as well. So, Mr. Palano, of course, at our meetings, we will provide any updates to the board and the community of any additional developments that might occur between now and July the twenty third, if that's okay.
You know, Bob, I just saw a note from, you know, the New York State School Board Association saying that some plans are due to the state by the fifteenth. So they they buried it in an email about the fact that we can continue to do virtual meetings. You know, at least through August fifth, but might be something I'm sure you got. I don't know if you get it, but if I can forward it over to you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I have not yet had the opportunity to look at that, Mr. Freiberg, yet.
Yeah.
One of the things that we will have to see when such a request is made is what it's going to look like. Very often, the type of questions asked may be more general or generic than specific plans, but we will take a very close look at that. And should we need to reconvene the board and or this task force, we will absolutely do that prior to the fifteenth. So at this time, Mr. Palano, if it's agreeable, I think we could bring the meeting to an end again with the thanks to everybody for their supporting contributions.
Again, I just want to thank everybody. Thank you so much. Okay.
Thanks, all.
Thanks.